All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the August 26, 6:00 p.m., virtual Planning Commission meeting. And welcome, everybody, on the screen. One thing, I just have some stuff that I need to read here real quickly. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, and we're going to run the meeting in terms of his conditions, which are included in your packet and agenda. So with that, we'll go ahead and have a roll call.
Commissioner Shannon?
Here.
Commissioner Shaffer? Commissioner Ali?
Here.
So Planning Director Moody just said that Commissioner Adams is going to be 15 to 20 minutes late.
Commissioner Doscher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Chairperson Eiler?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Shannon, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Okay, public comment on items not on the agenda. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. Do we have anyone that is online or anyone wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? I take that as a no. Okay. Agenda modifications, do we have any? I haven't heard of any. Okay, move forward with that. Approval of the minutes for July 22, 2020. Any discussion or motions, corrections?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I don't know about any other discussion.
Commissioner Doscher?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
So we have a first by Commissioner Doscher and a second by Commissioner Shannon. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We do, okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye. Yes.
Not yes, not yes.
Yes, I had muted myself, sorry.
Commissioner Doscher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Yes.
Chairperson Eiler?
Okay, got the minutes approved. Okay, for the next item on the agenda, we have consideration of an 18-month time extension for tentative parcel map 16-02 located along the east side of Garden Highway, south of Winship Road, and west of the Sutter County Airport. And staff, I believe we have a...
All right, so with this item, it's my pleasure, I'm going to introduce our new assistant planner, Jaspreet Kaur, and so she's going to present this item tonight for us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we are going to go over the tentative parcel map time extension request. So this was actually presented at our last Planning Commission meeting. So a little bit of background, again, this was presented at our last Planning Commission meeting where they requested an 18-month time extension. That was originally received back in 2019, but due to a delay in processing, it was approved July 22, and then on July 30, we did receive another 18-month time extension. So again, the subdivision is of 38.85 acres, located along the east side of Garden Highway, south of Winship Road, and west of the Sutter County Airport. And here is a map showing the location. And so this was the tentative map that was approved in March 2017 by the Planning Commission. And per the code, a map is valid for two years with an option for two extensions and not to exceed 18 months each that may be granted by the Planning Commission. So this will be the second and final 18-month extension for this map. Our recommendation tonight to Planning Commission is to approve an 18-month extension of time for tentative parcel map 1602 pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-2.610, resulting in a new expiration date of March 9, 2022. So in your staff report, it did state 2021, but it should, in fact, be 2022. And with that, that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, I do not see the applicant here. Anyone? Okay, we're good with that. And we'll go ahead and open for a public comment. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Do we have anyone online?
There are no comments received.
Okay, go ahead and close the public comment. And any discussion from the commission? Those online, any discussion or a motion? Motion?
I can make a motion if there's no further discussion. My only question, and she answered it, was the expiration date, so thank you. So I'll move to approve an 18-month extension of time for tentative parcel map 16-02 pursuant to City Municipal Code Section 8-2.610, resulting in a new expiration date of March 9, 2022.
Okay, and one thing I do want to mention is we're getting quite a bit of feedback, so if you're not speaking, be sure to mute, and I think we've been told that that will help the situation, so. Okay, so we have a first by Commissioner Blake and a second by Commissioner Shannon, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali? Commissioner Doscher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Aye.
Chairperson Eiler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have an 18-month extension. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing to consider tentative subdivision map 20-03 for Hooper Ranch Estates that will divide a 6.66-acre parcel into 22 lots. The new lots will consist of 21 single-family residential lots and one 2.48-acre lot that has an existing religious facility on it. The property is located on the west side of Hooper Road and south of Jefferson Avenue. And do we have a staff report?
And so we do. So, good evening, members of the commission, so the project before you. As the chairman's just stated, it's in regards to tentative subdivision map 20-03 regarding 6.66-acre parcel that would split it into 22 lots. The new lots will consist of 21 single-family residential lots and one 2.48-acre lot that has an existing religious facility on it. The residential portion of the project would be approximately five, at a density of five residences per acre, where the general plan allows a density between two to eight per acre. So here's an overview of the project location. It's along Hooper Road, just south of Jefferson, about 500-plus feet south of Jefferson and just north of Monroe. And so here you could see the church here. And here's a close-up of the proposed layout of the church, of the subdivision map. And so you have a straight road that tees into Hooper. It's called Shepherd Drive. And then you have a cul-de-sac, Unity Court, and then where it dead ends here to the west. And so parcels 1 through 11 on the north, and then parcels 12 through 21 around the And so here's a picture of the existing general plan land use. As you can see, this is, in the general, under the general plan, it's zoned as low-density residential, R1, and so that's the yellow. And so as you look at the general plan, zoom out of the general plan, basically this entire area is low-density R1 zoning around the, around the proposed subdivision. The bordering uses, as just discussed, are one, so single-family homes all the way around north, east, west, south. It's R1 with the church in that being an existing non-conforming use. Compatibility with neighboring uses, the project matches those uses, so there's no, there's no potential conflict with the zoning regarding the uses. There is some, always concerns with what those existing developments are on those, and so how do we consider those? And so as staff was looking through this project, we developed the conditions of approval specific to the project to basically work through those different site conditions. And so with those, we came, we came up with a few issues that were specific to this project development. And with that, one of them was condition of approval number five that calls for lots 1, 2, and 3 to be single-story construction. And so on this, there is an existing, there's existing home to the north, and so to provide that privacy, you know, basically, we're having 1, 2, and 3 called for to be single-family We looked at traffic. There, there's always concerns regarding traffic and how additional homes will impact that. Through the general plan, Hooper Road is designated as a collector roadway, and with that general plan, there was a traffic study done and environmental analysis for the general plan that, that shows that Hooper can handle the traffic and a level of service that's acceptable for the development of this and the whole area. And so with this development, Hooper Road will be conditioned, their half of the road will be conditioned to be constructed. And so the west half of Hooper Road will be constructed to the ultimate width, the half of the ultimate width, their half. This project is broken down into phases, and so most likely, how they have it proposed is Phase 1 around the church, and then Phase 2 is the single-family lots. And so the applicant's here, and the engineer, and he could get into more detail with any of the questions, but most likely what you'll see is Phase 1 where they subdivide the church off from the property. The Phase 2 will be considered remainder that could be then marketed and sold to a developer. And then with that Phase 1, the church, the property will need to dedicate all the ultimate right-of-ways for Hooper Road and for Shepherd Drive. But then with the development of the Phase 2 with the single-family, they will need to build those actual improvements. And that's typically done for financing reasons and, and property owners not being developers. So condition 19, so this is a big, a big change, I guess, in, in tentative maps and improvement plan development since probably the mid-2000s. And so when the city's general plan was redone in 2004, it called for tree-lined streets. And so that's been interpreted since, since the 2004 document to be parkway strips. And so with that, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of issues associated with parkway strips. Either they're, they're too narrow and you have root, root issues where they're raising the sidewalks, the trees have conflicts with the houses, and you have different maintenance problems with, as far as who's responsible to maintain them and who owns them versus the property owner versus the lighting and landscape maintenance district. So with this tentative map and with coordination from staff, they proposed two options. And so with the two options, they, we're still pushing for the tree-lined streets, and so we developed a condition that with the detached option, that's, that's our standard, what you'd see, what you historically have seen over the last 10, 15 years, is where on the minor, so we're only talking about minor streets, so not for a collector or arterial, so not for Hooper. Hooper would remain with the detached park, parkway, but for the interior street on the mine, for the Shepherd Drive and for that cul-de-sac, if you could see here, this planned view, you have a curb and gutter, and then typically we have a six-foot parkway strip and then a sidewalk. And so the proposing two, two options, and in this condition 19, it spells that out, is that you have Option A where it's detached, you put a city tree in there as approved and, and a, and a parkway planning that's approved, or you go to an attached option. But in that condition, it specifically talks about how they're still required to have at minimum one city-approved tree per parcel. And so with that, we're basically giving the developer the option to still comply with this tree-lined street goal, but to have that flexibility for stormwater, you know, to provide that flexibility with, with the house and the layout, and it also saves costs because they're not running over sidewalk and replacing sidewalk. We're not having maintenance issues, so, because now it becomes a, a property owner tree where now it's not a lighting and landscape maintenance district that has to be maintained by the city, and then also the liability issues associated with the sidewalk being raised, it turns onto a private property responsibility. So this is, this is a change. It has gone through staff, and we looked at it, and we believe that it complies with the intent of the general plan if the requirement for the condition of approval stands where they keep the, they still need to plant the city-approved tree. So be happy to answer more questions on that when it comes. Condition number three, it talks about undergrounding. And so also with this project is, it's relatively new with city council in their March meeting, in their March meeting, they approved a new undergrounding policy. So historically, any, before March, any sort of subdivision would trigger undergrounding of existing utility poles. And so the, the power poles on Hooper, historically, before, before the new policy came into place, they would be required to be undergrounded. With this, we're allowing them to follow under the city's new guiding policy that allows them to relocate and then put a portion of that undergrounding cost towards undergrounding or towards the project to relocate them. So they, they'll still have to move them, they still have to clean things up, but there won't be a straight underground in front of that church property. So with that, it's, at a staff level, it's, it's pretty straightforward project, 21 units, it's in an existing zoning for R1. And with that, we're looking for council or Planning Commission to make them, make the findings, as stated here in the staff report, that after reviewing the, considering the mitigation declaration prepared for this project, including the proposed mitigation measures, approval of TSM 2003 for 21 single-family residential lots will not generate any significant environmental impacts. TSM 2003 findings, UBS City Municipal Code 82609, there's no findings of denial for the subdivision map, and tentative subdivision map 2003 floodplain management findings per UBS City Municipal Code 69603 meets necessary requirements for approval. And so with that, we make the recommendations A and B with, with a couple caveats here, just a couple cleanup items, is that with the recommendation, we're looking, there's a couple legal paragraphs in the conditions of approval that were carried over from a development permit, so we're looking to remove, delete the last two paragraphs on page one of the conditions of approval as they do not apply to tentative subdivision map's timeline. So there's a couple paragraphs in there. Let's start with approval, and it has a null and void with a date. Those, those are carryover from a development plan, legal document, and with this being a subdivision map, the subdivision map timeline is controlled by the Subdivision Map Act and the City Municipal Code, so it's not applicable. So we're requesting that be deleted. And then also, on the, the cover of the tentative map, there's a general note, general note four, that talks about being with a development permit, just to avoid any confusion regarding approval of a tentative map and a development permit, we're, we're requesting that that note be stricken from the tentative map, so it doesn't create any future confusion. So recommendations A and B with the following modifications, delete the last two paragraphs on page one of the conditions of approval and strike tentative subdivision map general note number four. So with that, the applicant is here, and they're, they could answer, be able to answer any detailed questions about the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dale?
Yes?
Could I ask a question of Ben?
Go ahead, Commissioner Ali.
Okay. Ben, you repeated it twice. I'm sorry, I have to have my mic on right now. I don't know if I'll stop, does? But you repeated it twice, but I still couldn't understand what you were saying as the last thing that was to not be considered or to be stricken. Said "for," but I'm not sure what it was.
So if we go to the tentative map, on the tentative map, there's a general note four, and it says, this is an application for a development permit. And so just to avoid any confusion, this note's been on other subdivision maps, you know, it came through as a development to allow for development, but the city has a development permit process, and so to avoid any confusion, we want to have that note stricken because we're approving a tentative map, not a development permit, and so...
Okay, thank you.
We want that to be recorded in the minutes, should there be some future confusion.
So Ben, for, just for clarification, because I'm, I'm still having trouble finding it as well, which item is that that's being stricken?
So on the map, in this area, general notes...
Literally on the map?
On the map itself, general note number four.
There were other items from the conditions of approval, though, correct?
There are two paragraphs in the conditions of approval.
And which ones were those?
And so there are paragraphs five and six, and so if you go to page one of the conditions of approval, they begin with approval of this, of this tentative subdivision map shall be considered null and void, and it continues on to the next paragraph of page one.
Which condition is it?
So there's not a condition, it's, it's part of the legal, it's the legal document, the notice in the front.
Okay, thank you.
Then also, just to denote, we're talking about, there's, there's a condition of approval regarding basically a right to farm, and so that's condition number 39. And so the city had a standard condition that the developer shall demonstrate to the satisfaction of the public works department, a notice will be provided informing individuals acquiring lots in the subdivision at the proximity of ongoing agricultural. One of the ways to satisfy that, and the city's looking at, is basically to record a covenant on the deed, just as a right to farm, so as properties sell, the new owners would have that. And so we have an existing condition in there, there's different ways to satisfy that. We're not necessarily saying, but we're, we're looking at some way to show that proof of that and then also continue that notice into the future for that right to farm as existing properties have, don't, aren't developed yet.
So is 39 going to be rewritten?
No.
And as is?
It would stand as is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Commissioner Shannon?
Okay, I have questions, actually two. One, I didn't actually see it, it might be implied, or I may have just gone over it. I saw that the streets will be constructed according to city requirements, but are they going to be deeded to the city, or will they remain as private streets?
No. Public streets and with the recording of the subdivision map, so when those phases record, they will dedicate that property to the city.
Thank you. And the other question...
We accept it once the improvements are completed.
Okay. The other question, well, first a comment, and I love the idea that you're giving the option of attached and non-attached on the sidewalks and all that, because I've seen just sidewalk lifting and all that, so that's not been my favorite thing. So I'm, I'm real happy with that. When a tree is planted and becomes the responsibility of the homeowner, what happens if the tree dies? Is it required that they put it back, or it, is that a choice up to the homeowner at that time? I'm just curious.
So with the detached sidewalk, those go into a lighting and landscape maintenance district that's funded through property taxes, and then the city or its contractor will replace that at a time when, when they, when it's identified for work, typically when they, they get to it at the right time. On the private side, that is, that is one of the unknown elements right now. There's not a specific requirement that says they'll be removed, what, what happens to them. And so with that, the city is working through a master tree program right now and, and working out some of those stipulations. But with this project, we're basically calling for that tree to be planted, and there's no lasting condition or requirement that says somebody couldn't mow it out tomorrow. So that, that is how it is right now.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, I'd like to just add on to that, if I may, since we're on that subject. My question was with respect to the, the detached option is, so there's a provision right now, I presume, for the trees if, if, that, that the trees are removed or that, I'm sorry, for the, if we wind up going with that option, or if the developer goes with that option, is the landscape maintenance provision going to be set up in terms of, for the property taxes and all that? If, is it not set up at this point, if they go with that option?
If, it's not, it's, it's a condition that they need to enter into lighting and landscape maintenance district?
There will be one.
There will be one, but the maintenance district would not require the tree trimming and the tree maintenance if it's with the, with the attached option, but it would include your lighting element. And so, and which does, there, there's pros and cons to, to the requirement, for sure. There's definitely maintenance pros for the city, because we're not running into the high level of, you know, people are now taking care of the responsibility of that tree, and it also lowers their annual property tax because they're not having to be billed to pay for the contractor to trim it, but it does put that burden on to the property owner for the maintenance.
All right. Other questions?
Hi, this is Lori.
Yes, and actually, if we could make the mark that Lori Adams is now attending, go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
A couple of questions. So on this detached/attached, we've made provisions on another project because of the area around it. It was kind of matching existing, that was the property over, I believe, on Bridge Street, and we allowed them to remove this requirement. What, can you review, Ben, again, why you've allowed this and following the requirements that were established by the general plan?
So this has been a longstanding issue for the last five years with developers and with the city. There's, there's definitely been maintenance issues on the city side, and there's also issues on the, on the developer's side due to the cost of the LMDs, the cost, the, the land, the loss of the land and how the setback works. And so, so working through our development ad hoc committee, this has been brought up by the developers as a potential leave the option up to the developers, but, but to try to meet the theme of the general plan, we're starting to see it more often in other agencies, recently saw some stuff in Lincoln, or is it Whitney Oaks? We have some pictures from the developer. And so, and so after review of that, and, and also concerns with how developers need to utilize different land area to comply with the stormwater requirements for the onsite retention, that we're giving that option, we've decided to give, allow that option for the developer, but, but to still have approved... to still have approved city street.
Okay, so I would just like to state...
It would only be applicable to the interior minor residential. This would not be applicable to collectors or arterials.
Correct. So I just have a lot of concerns with, because our general plan is so far out of date, we're starting now to kind of adapt policies outside of that without having to go through a complete process and review. So I start to get concerned that we're moving too far outside of that and start developing policies that are going to be expected on every project now, that we haven't actually formally processed that as an option. So I have some concerns about that. I shared my concerns also with Ben in regards to approving these projects because our procedures and our plan is so outdated. So, I want to just kind of make that comment generally as we move through this, because we could be setting standards that are going to be difficult for us to take back. And I know that people want trees, but once you hit it on the homeowner as that home sells, that tree could get removed, the landscaping could change, and then it changes the whole outcome of what we're trying to create in our neighborhoods with tree-lined streets. So I just want to make that statement.
Okay, any other questions?
I had a question of why condition approval number four...
Is this Commissioner Ali?
This is Commissioner Ali, I'm sorry. Why we're deferring the improvements to lot 22 until the other one develops? And I'm just going to share that I used to walk that neighborhood daily when I lived in that part of town. And you could be walking down there at seven o'clock in the morning, have two BMWs racing down the street using both lanes at seven miles an hour. Any additional areas that have sidewalks would be a great improvement. So deferring it, I understand that the current owner is waiting for a developer to buy and have all that funding to do it, but why not start setting a standard at this time? And then I'm also questioning this undergrounding, what I'm hearing, is that we're not going to be requiring undergrounding, we're going to put money away for that at a later time? Is that what I'm hearing? Because that, again, diminishes the quality of a neighborhood to have all those poles down the street. Rather like Bridge Street right now, it's a beautiful street with the bridge except all those power poles and power lines running across Bridge Street. And every time the wind blows, it's a potential...
And so...
I don't know what I heard.
So regards to condition number four, it really has to do with timing and the development. No houses can be built, and so really with the phase one, it would be paper. The recording would happen at the recordings office, and then that would sell. You wouldn't see a physical change to that development besides that parcel being subdivided and sold off. And so with that, for the timing of the improvements of when to come with the houses, that's why we've pushed it off to phase two. Realistically, how things, to finance them, and the applicant can definitely go into it, it turns into a financing, you know, if a church doesn't have funds or selling off the back to generate funds, the timing on it, they would have to generate the funds first to build the $200,000 worth of improvements, then sell the back. And so it's really a timing, and staff doesn't see, there's not going to be a physical change to the parcel until those homes are put in place. And so that's why we've deferred it to the homes in order to make it easier to build, really to basically, to aid the development with it, is why we've deferred it, to be blunt. And so, Daria, and then also with the undergrounding policy, you are accurate. By leaving the poles there, it's not prettier. But with that council, through the development ad hoc committee, working through affordable housing, and working through what it takes to aid development to move forward in the city, that we identified an undergrounding policy to try to find that balance between not doing anything and doing something. And we've landed on this undergrounding policy where they require them to move them out of the road for existing. Anything new has to be undergrounded. So anything going back into the new subdivision has to be undergrounded. Anything that will be in the roadway has to be moved out of the roadway, and then 25% of that cost that would typically be for undergrounding goes to making more visual improvements. And so, that's the balance that the city council has decided to move forward with for the undergrounding, and so it complies with city council policy on that current policy.
Thank you.
Okay, just making the rounds, any other questions? Okay, one other question that I had was about the letter that was included with the packet from the homeowner. And I believe, I was just trying to wrap my arms around what exactly, I had trouble reading the letter, so I'll just state that, that maybe it's been copied a couple times or something, I'm not sure. But with respect to, I believe most of the letter was about traffic, but I just wanted to confirm that and also just make sure that there weren't any other issues that were brought up as a result of that letter.
So bear with me, Chairman, I'm going to read that letter into the record, and so we've transcribed that into a form, it was a little more readable. And so...
Through the chair?
Yes.
This is my... And I needed to disclose, as I read that letter closer, the author of the letter is my aunt, so I don't know, I just need to disclose that. Correct, Shannon? I don't know if there's anything I need to do thereafter, but just disclose.
You don't need to do anything. Thank you for your disclosure.
So, through the public hearing, we'll enter in, due to COVID-19, we did include the letter in the packet, but with COVID-19, when we open the public hearing, I'll read it into the record. And so I have a transcribed version that we could do if the public hearing is open.
I guess, okay, that makes sense, all right. Okay, any other questions at this point? All right, kind of jumped the gun on the questions a little bit here, but we want to give the applicant a chance to address any issues. And if you could, Mr. Menard, state your name and...
My name is Sean Menard, I'm with MHM Engineering, and I represent the applicant on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Chair, and members of the commission. Like Ben said, this is a pretty straightforward project, we probably consider this an infill project, this turned on, sorry. Consider this an infill project. The storm drainage was built probably in the early 2000s as part of a subdivision located just south of here on Hooper Road. So that goes to the intersection of Monroe and Hooper Road, so we'll be tying into that for storm drainage. The sewer actually extends all the way up past this project. It was originally put in by that subdivision, but a couple homeowners extended it, so we'll be tying into that for sewer. It's shallow, but we were able to make it work for this subdivision. Some of the key items, and I have some pictures if you want to see what they're doing on that concept of a detached sidewalk versus attached. We're finding in most of the communities we're working in now are going back to attached sidewalk, almost all the Yuba County projects, except in Plumas Lake, tied into their Plumas Lake specific plan, that's a little anomaly, but Lincoln, Roseville, and I have some exhibits from, which is in Rockland, Whitney Oaks, it's a brand-new project, where they're all attached sidewalks also. They still have the narrower streets, similar to what you guys have, but that is a concept that's been borne out throughout the state, at least in North State, at least in areas I work in. Here's some exhibits if you want to give it to the... I keep one myself. Guess I don't need quite as many because I'm online. This has become a big deal, and for numerous reasons, Ben hit on some of them, from the aspect of the city, the cost it takes to operate and maintain it. From the developer's side, during construction, they tend to break the sidewalks. Long-term, the roots tend to lift up the sidewalks. But one of the other things that's happened, mostly during the drought, the landscaping has to be drought tolerant, and we're finding a lot of this area ends up being bark or decomposed granite with a tree. So when it was first started, we had a lot of grass in that area. And it's switched to, well, you can't put grass hardly anymore because of the drought-tolerant landscaping requirements. So there's numerous reasons why most of jurisdictions have gone to this. It's also safer, or not safer, but you see a lot of people, they tend to pull their tires up onto their people's yards. When you have a sidewalk, they're actually still on the sidewalk, there's just a curb, then they're end up in the grass, or it turns into mud, and it becomes an ongoing eyesore in my mind. So there's numerous reasons, but the reason we don't want to ask absolutely just to go attached, because there's situations where we want to go detached for water quality and other features, depending on the project. Since this one doesn't have an actual builder yet, an actual defined project, so we want the option on this, and you'll probably see this more often as we move forward, because it's becoming a bigger and bigger deal. So hopefully those exhibits showed, they'll still have the street tree, they still look nice, those happen to be $600,000 to $800,000 homes on smaller lots. It's a little bit different market in Whitney Oaks, but it still looks good in that neighborhood. So I just wanted to bring those for you to look at. The power poles, Ben mentioned, the power poles along Hooper Road. That policy made by the city council has actually made this project feasible. Prior to that, we've looked at it, and numerous people have passed on this property until that policy came into effect. That's what's making this project feasible. There will be one pole relocated near the, get this right. Oh, I guess, oh, it's on the touchscreen, oh, whatever. At the intersection of Shepherd and Hooper, there is a power pole we have to relocate. All the power poles will be located between the curb and the sidewalk along Hooper Road when we're done. We have to move one pole to meet that criteria. And then we'll evaluate the criteria as the new policy, how much money we have to make a donation back or none. It's real close on this one, it looks like a break even under that policy, that by moving that pole, it still costs $50,000 to move the pole, that it'll be a break even. So that's the power pole situation, again, that's very important to this project, and you'll see it in a lot of other projects, to put them over the top and be feasible. The deferred improvements, I think Ben did a good job. The main issue is, when you do improvements, you require the improvements to defer or mitigate a change. And in the case of just creating a separate lot for the religious facility, which is lot 22, creating that as a separate lot does not change the use, the traffic, or anything by just simply creating that separate parcel. The use change will occur when we build 21 residential lots. And we understand that, and that's why we defer it. Another reason is, the reason that the church is doing this, is they need money. So if they had to go do all the improvements there, they don't have money in the first place, so it's a kind of cart before the horse type deal. So that's one reason we asked for that, and we're glad that staff agreed with us. But all the other conditions on this, we've worked with staff, and we're fine with all the conditions as presented. And the change on this map, the change of condition four, or the note on here is four, we've used that note on 4,000 lots, but I understand the concern, and we can take that note off, we have no problem with that. The other two comment about in the, what is it, the last page of the, we have no issues on that either, so.
Great, okay, thank you. And with that, before we have questions for the applicant, we've been asked to take a five-minute break to clean up some technical issues with Zoom, so we're going to go ahead and do that now, and we'll come back in five minutes.
Okay Dale, so for those on the Microsoft teams, we've just emailed out the presentations and the photos, so they should be coming to you shortly on your email. So we apologize for that technical issue, we didn't realize that you couldn't see the presentation. So with that, we could start.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get back into this, and we're at the point of any questions for the applicant? And Commissioner Shannon? And if someone's typing, maybe they can mute also? Commissioner Shannon, did you have a question?
I'm waiting for him to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is kind of a general question, because I know, it's a general question because I realize that you don't actually have a developer builder yet. Maybe you do. What price range are you estimating that these homes will be in?
Yeah, like you said, there's not a developer yet, but I can tell you where it becomes feasible, somewhere between $450 and $500.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's all I can tell you, but it could be higher, it could be on the lower end, but I bet you'll be in that ballpark, just to make it pencil out.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question. Sorry to make you walk all the way up there to answer that.
Well, we might have others. Any other questions for the applicant?
For the chair, this is Lori.
Commissioner Adams, go ahead.
Hi Sean.
Hi.
Do you mind if you know if any of the subdivision samples that you've provided are required to have an HOA as a part of their subdivision agreement?
This is just one subdivision, no. In this particular one, I'm not aware of it being an HOA, my understanding it's just a standard subdivision. But the other ones that we've experienced and doing in Yuba County, they aren't HOA. You talking about like to maintain the front yard or something like that?
Right, that has a standard and a maintenance process to ensure that those standards are held, since we're taking away the landscape strip where the city would maintain it and ensure that it was trimmed and kept pretty, we're now putting it to the homeowner's side of it, and you know, the expectations of the homeowner aren't secure. So I was just wondering if some of these that are going away from that strip were requiring some sort of a HOA or a program set up to ensure that those landscapes were kept in a format or a requirement for those landscapes to have trees, so that putting those in, then they don't get removed, or if there's, you know, a policy or a procedure that they have to get approved to change their front yard landscaping to ensure that that beauty is kept throughout the subdivision.
Again, I don't know what this particular Whitney Ranch project requirements are, but I know we have right now about 125-foot lot subdivision under construction right now in Yuba County, and they went to attached sidewalk, and it does not have that requirement. And we just started another 41-lot subdivision in Yuba County, and it doesn't have that. And a couple other projects we have that we were working on in Wheatland, they didn't have it either. We haven't gotten to construction yet, but, so I know what you're saying, I've seen those, but most of the projects we're working on do not have that requirement.
Most of the projects you're working on are local requirements, or local projects, right? You're not looking, are you doing anything in Roseville? Do you have any...
Yes, there's some in that are tentative map phase right now, but not any under construction.
You haven't gotten that far down the road yet? Okay. I just, I know what the intent of the general plan is, and I know we're trying to mitigate this for you guys, I just want to make sure that we, we're not, you know, hanging our hat on the fact that that, you know, future buyer is going to create that feel in the subdivision that we're actually looking to...
And Ben was, when we asked for this, Ben at least, and the other staff we worked with, was very clear that we're still going to have to plant the trees, and we're going to have to show on our improvement plans, for, you know, typically even on the ones when they were in between, a detached sidewalk, we had to have a street plan. So, for instance, Shepherd will be all one type tree, the cul-de-sac will be another type tree, and Hooper will be another type tree. We don't want the whole subdivision, even under the old policy, to be the same tree in case there's a disease where they all die at the same time. So we'd still have that in our improvement plans. Hooper will actually be detached, so that road will actually have a detached sidewalk. Shepherd and Unity, on our improvement plans, we'll say whether it's going to, what type of tree it's going to be. of tree it's going to be. And so when the homeowner or the developer has a requirement to do the front yard landscaping, he will have to plant that tree. But that'll show up on our improvement plans and will reflect into their landscape plan for the front yard. So that will be, and that was very clear, staff is going to make us do that on our improvement plans, regardless of which way we go.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And I know, Ben, you were going to read in the letter?
Yeah, so we received a handwritten, a nice handwritten note. It took me a little while to remember my cursive, so it was actually, it was actually enjoyable somewhat to work through it. So I transcribed it to make it a little easier. So with the COVID-19, we'll read the comment into the record. And so, "The letter was received August 17, 2020 by Judy Mitchell regarding subdivision map 2003. To whom it may concern, the subdivision 20-03 Hooper Ranch Estates is one of the dumbest ideas ever. We have so much traffic on Hooper Road, you'd think it was a freeway. By the way, there are no signs stating it's a 25 mile an hour zone. There's not one sign and somebody drives like a bat out of hell for what reason, I have no idea. The Hooper Ranch subdivision cannot happen for there's no room for 21 houses. Just like Monroe, there are so many cars driving in and out of that road, something must be going on that's not legal. Furthermore, there are enough homes on Hooper Road without more. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Judy Mitchell." Thanks again. And I believe we have a couple people online.
Great, okay, thank you. And other questions from the public? Go ahead, one at a time. State your name and address.
We haven't received any comments yet.
Okay, do we have anyone online at this point?
Yes, there's four.
Okay. Are they able to get through or speak to us?
They would have to write in their comments, so if you want to give them just a minute.
Oh, they have to write in their, okay, thank you.
Yes, correct.
Are they for this project? No comments.
All right, I was going to give it one more, okay, we'll go with that. All right, hearing no other comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, any other questions for the council, or for the commission, or questions, discussion, or motion?
This is Lori, through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
So Ben, to address the comments that were received, I'm assuming that you're going to have signs posted for speed limits and those things are outlined in our conditions, letter of conditions in regards to that?
Yeah, I could definitely work with the Public Works Department, review the site for 25 mile an hour signs or the applicable speeds lines. That's definitely something I'll take up with Public Works. Regarding the amount of houses and the level of service for Hooper, it definitely, it sounds like Ms. Mitchell has been there for quite a while and so there will be an increase, but it's well within the level of service that the city establishes acceptable. And so.
Right, I understand that part. I just want to make sure that we're addressing the speeds because I too frequent this area and do see the same thing, so I just want to make sure that we are addressing that part that we can.
Any other comments? Commissioner Shannon?
I move that the commission adopt the following findings. Number one, the environmental. Number two, TSM 20-03 as stated in the package. And the floodplain management findings and that we adopt a resolution approving TSM 20-03 subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures with the correction of omitting number four on the, was it the site plan? What do we?
With the following modifications, delete the last two paragraphs on page one of the conditions of approval and on tentative subdivision map, strike general note four.
Wow, thank you. I didn't even look up there.
Okay, so that's.
Second half.
Okay, so we have a first by Commissioner Shannon and a second by Commissioner Adams?
Ali.
Ali, Commissioner Ali, okay. Can we do any other discussion? Can we do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Commissioner Dosher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Aye.
Chairperson Eiler?
Yes. Okay, congratulations, you guys have a project. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. Public hearing to consider tentative subdivision map, TSM 20-04 East Sanborn Estates that will divide 1.94 acre, 1.94 acre parcel into 12 single-family residential lots. The project is located at the northern terminus of Bay Drive and both sides of Jody Drive and La Rabin Way. And I believe we have a staff report. Planning Director Moody?
Okay, so similar in process, so we have another subdivision, which is nice and you've seen this one before you in the past, in the relatively recent past. So it's in regards to tentative subdivision map 2004 East Sanborn Estates. And so this property was before you previously where they split the property for three residential lots along Sanborn Road and then the parcel there in yellow is, was a remainder parcel. And then recently, a couple meetings back, we were before you regarding extending that subdivision map and to keep that, those three parcels alive on Sanborn. So recently, this rectangular piece of property has switched hands with the applicant being InterWest Homes and they've submitted a subdivision map to complete the remainder of that subdivision. So it's what we would consider an infill project. There's some history with that. I believe that when that developed in the early 2000s, the landowner wasn't available, readily available, or the property was tied up as to why it wasn't completed now. And so when you look at the parcel, it's, it looks like it should have been developed in the past really. Jody Drive stops both on the north and the south side and so it would continue Jody Drive on that east through there and then it would extend Bay Drive up into a cul-de-sac there. And so this remainder parcel from the original subdivision map is 1.94 acres. It would subdivide that into 12 single-family residential lots with a density of approximately six residences per gross acre. And as previously stated, the general plan allows a density between two and eight residences for our one zoning. So here's a high-level view of the general plan where it shows the existing uses where on three sides of it is existing low-density residential with some medium-density residential called out across the street that's currently agricultural land. Here's a table showing those uses. So compatibility. So with neighboring uses, as just stated, it's really an infill project that really staff level surprised that it hasn't filled in sooner than it has. And so it's been kicked around for many years with InterWest recently coming forward to do the subdivision map and move forward with it. And so when reviewing this project, looking at for any specific issues that we need to deal with regarding conflicting concerns or how do we, if there's any special criteria that needs to be established with that, we looked at lots four, five, and six. And so we looked at the existing homes around it and typically we run into an issue where there are single-family homes and then if we don't call out some sort of condition for two-story homes or to restrict that visibility, you know, over privacy concerns. Usually the city, we're trying to find that balance between respecting the developers' rights and the city's densities with the general plan to allow for that higher-density, larger-sized house to be built, but at the same time respecting privacy issues and views where possible. And so we did a, I did a site visit and looked at this because it was, it's kind of a mixed bag around there. So this subdivision on the east side was built in the early 90s, mainly single-family homes. And then you have in the 2000s where you have pretty much all two-story homes here to the south. And then up to the north, you have kind of an intermix of two-story and single-family homes. And so the view was determined that, most of the view is already restricted out to the west because of these existing homes, two-story homes in development on the north and the south. There's a large tree here that was kind of having a border between these two, a large oak tree and then, and so I took a look at it, looked at the size of the yards, looked at the city's policies and with that, we developed this condition number, there's a condition in there, I'm not sure what number it is here, but it was regarding lots four, five, and six to single-family story or to single-family, single-story construction or if there's an upper story, there's no windows less than six feet above the floor to provide that privacy for that. And so with that, they would still have to comply with all building and fire codes where they would have to have a window on one of the north or south walls that complies with fire and emergency exits. But should they decide to build two-story, it would have to have this requirement that the window sills would be above six foot so there wouldn't be a privacy issue to that side. That's historically, we've recently with the subdivision that we just approved, we were more specific regarding the lots one, two, and three, that they had to be single-story due to the direct location of kind of a side yard view and the house plan configuration. But we were, so we're cognizant of it and we look at it at special situations. This one is also that I'll read into record later on. We did receive an email from the property owner over here to the east regarding the concern about the elevation of this existing, of this existing subdivision to the north. And that's where part of the decision process to allow the two-story homes is really with the single-family construction right now, the existing, this existing ground and the applicant's engineer, Sean, could add some more detail on to this, but right now, how this ground sits, you're about three to four inches above it with a vacant property. Once this road's built, the road's really tied in where you have to connect A and B and then due to our flood standards, the pad of the house, it needs to be a minimum of one foot above the road to meet floodplain standards. And so the way this subdivision was constructed and the drainage that's in there, in order to make that A and B, you're going to have a building pad that's approximately a foot, foot and a half above her yard to the east, to the property owners to the east. And then you're going to have additionally, architectural standards have changed substantially since the early 90s. Now you have buildings with nine to 10-foot ceilings, you have higher pitched roofs. And so with that, with the single-family, single-family residents built that high, really that view is going to be restricted as a single-family residence or with a two-family residence. And so that's where staff pushed to make sure we had the privacy concerns identified with that, but then to allow the two-story construction. But that is not, that is in the discretion of the commission, that definitely as if there's concerns regarding respecting that view. And the applicant could go into more detail about the requirements and the stipulations about how to just facilitate that drainage and how to connect A to B and to meet those So traffic, there are two local streets impacted by the project. You have Bay Drive that will be, it'd be a cul-de-sac, so there'll be a continuation of those houses into the cul-de-sac and then you'll complete Jody Drive, which will actually benefit some of the neighbors because now they don't have to just go south or north, depending on which side they live on, they could go either way. And so with that, we've had, after reviewing and considering the mitigated, so environmental and the findings. So with the project, we've, staff has prepared an environmental assessment and an initial study and we're looking to review and consider the mitigated negative declaration prepared for this project, including the proposed mitigation measures, approval of TSM 2004 for 12 single-family residential lots that will not generate any significant environmental impacts. And we're looking for a TSM tentative subdivision map 2004 findings, UBA municipal code 82609, no findings for denial of the subdivision map. And tentative subdivision map 2004 floodplain management findings, UBA municipal code 6-9603 meet the necessary requirements for approval. And then with that, we have recommendations similar to the past item with the modifications regarding deleting those two non-applicable paragraphs and then also modifying the note on the map. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then also the applicant and their engineers, the engineer is here to answer any specific questions.
Okay. Actually, at this point, maybe we could have the applicant come up and talk a little bit about the project and then we can ask questions of either staff or the applicant.
Hello, my name is Sean Menard with MHM Engineering and 1204 East Street, Marysville. Thanks, Chair, members of the commission. Tonight, I represent the owner of the product, InterWest Homes, as a developer and they plan on subdivising this into 12 residential lots and they're on a fast track. We already actually have the improvement plans done and we're ready to go to submit those and go to construction as soon as we possibly can. They're in desperate need of lots and so this fit the mold and it's a smaller lot product. As you can see by the lot sizes, it's not going to be the one they did on Tulley Parkway, it'll be more like the ones they're doing up on Peage Road. So we didn't ask for the concession on the detached, attached because it didn't make sense because we're tying into a road to the north and tying into the road to the south, both detached. And by the time you transition in and transition out, it was, there was no benefit or it's too complicated, so we just left it as it is. The cul-de-sac bulbs historically in Yuba City are attached anyways, so it was really not an issue on the, it's really, it's already attached for the most part on the cul-de-sac. So some of the questions that have come up and I've seen some of the comments that have been provided. The drainage standards, as Ben kind of alluded to, along lots four, five, and six in Phase Two, which is the eastern boundary, we're kind of controlled by connecting to the road to the north and connecting to the road to the south. And then we have requirements to meet once we connect into those roads, as Ben said. It's not simply meeting the city's code of one foot above the back of sidewalk. We also, since most of the homes nowadays are being, have federal loans, we have to meet FHA loan criteria, which requires you to have a slope of 1% to the back of the lot, to the center of the lot, and then three tenths to the finish pad. And by the time you do that, you end up closer to 1.5 to 1.6 feet on these smaller lots above the sidewalk. That's why if you go look in those subdivisions of roads, those driveways look kind of steep. It's because we're meeting the federal drainage requirements because most likely, these are going to potentially have a federal loan. And so we have to meet that criteria. So we will be higher than the property owner's property adjacent. Currently, the pads are about three tenths to five tenths, depending on where you are, higher than that, their property already. When we get said and done, we, like I said, we already have the improvement plans basically done, ready to submit to Public Works. It looks like we're about somewhere between nine and 10 inches above their property. So there's a condition in the, in the condition of approval. So, there's a condition in the, in the, in the condition of approval that the city, somewhere around in the 2000, 2000 range, where they started requiring all retaining fences are to be made out of concrete or masonry. So, the, the part that's retaining the material, the dirt, has to be concrete or retaining, or masonry block. That way, they don't rot out. And I can't speak to what the subdivision to the north was, it was right on the timeframe when they were switching over that criteria. But a lot of those earlier ones, they just had a wood post and a two-by-12, and, you know, maybe it's pressure-treated, but it could rot out. So, we'll put the new fence or the retaining fence with a six-foot standard fence on top. The property owner can leave their existing fence up or tear it down and utilize this new fence as their own. And so, that'll occur along the eastern boundary. We looked at everything we possibly could, and there is no way to, because of the constraints to the north and south. So, we're doing everything we can to minimize that height difference, but it looks like it's going to be right around nine inches to 10 inches. The other comments, the two-story, it's condition, it's condition number four in here. We work with staff quite a bit. The type of construction we're experiencing in this area, to the north, it's all two-story houses. These size lots, pretty much, that's the market now. If you go anywhere, you see all two-story houses. That's the market. And so, the plan is to build two-story houses on these 12 lots. Understanding the privacy issues with the neighbor to the, neighbors to the east, we worked with, through a condition, very similar to the condition that was placed upon the most recent project I worked on, Vogue Stewart Master Plan, tentative subdivision map that was approved by this commission, and ultimately, the city council, called Newcombe Ranch. We had a condition placed, very similar, it shall be single-story or two-story as, I forget the exact language, as approved or by the community development director. This one has that same language with the added requirement that any windows facing to the east shall be six feet above the flooring. So, you know, unless it's some guy's 6'10", he can't really look into the neighbors' backyards. So, this, the windows on the north and south side of the house will still be the larger windows to meet fire code and all those requirements. One of the things that's very interesting, when you look at the difference in height of a two-story house versus a single-story, on a two-story house, you tend to have, the roof pitch is flatter, like a 5'12" roof pitch. So, a two-story house, the ones they're planning on building are probably going to be somewhere in the 24 to 25-foot range. They have a smaller footprint, because you can get more square footage on a smaller footprint. So, they will actually have a bigger backyard versus if they're a single-family. I mean, it's not single-family, it's single-story. Now, a single-story house, they're trying to, they'd maximize the coverage on the lot and probably be all to all the minimum setbacks, 20-foot on the rear, five on the sides. But, single-story houses tend to be now 6'12" or 8'12" pitch for numerous reasons. And one of the things that used to be done on houses, we used to see a lot of what we call full hip houses, you know, where all the, all the four sides slope inwards. You're going to probably see less of that now because of the new requirement that the houses have to have solar panels. So, you're going to see, what we have, a gabled end on either end and a, you know, and then a standard slope on the front and back of the house. So, you can maximize the square footage on those areas for the solar panels. And so, the height of a single-story house is close somewhere, depending on the pitch, if they use 6'12", 8'12", is about, could be anywhere from 18 to 21 feet. So, the difference between a two-story house and a single-story house, you're going to see, you know, as little as three feet to maybe a five-foot difference in height. So, either house is going to have a visual barrier. And the reason why, in a single-story, you have to have all the air conditioning, and all that stuff's now inside the attic now. And then, we already talked about the solar panels and try to maximize this square footage on the roof. So, that's why we're asking for that condition. And again, it took, that was, it took a lot of staff time back and forth to come up with a condition that satisfied staff and also worked with our project. So, we're okay with all the conditions as proposed and the modifications that, those two modifications that note on the plans, number four, changing that or deleting that, and also, those two paragraphs as stated on the, in the recommendation. So, drainage, you know, where there's no storm drainage stubbed out, so we're going to flow it down the street to the north and south. Sewer stubbed out will connect to the existing sewer to the south. Bay Drive, obviously, we're connecting to the sewer to the south, and we'll sheet-flow the storm drainage to the south. So, that's pretty much the project in a nutshell. But if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Great, okay. So, at this point in time, we'll go ahead and take questions from, of the applicant or staff. And so, we'll just kind of work our way around. Commissioner Dasher, do you have any questions?
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Shannon, okay. I'm just going by how I see it on the screen here. Commissioner Blake?
No, no questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Ali?
No questions, thank you.
Wow, okay. So, no questions for the applicant or staff. And at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I believe we had a couple of items to read into the, into the public, from the public.
So, we received an email with a attached letter from Ms. Stacy Hoffman, Monday, August 24th, at 6:05 PM. So, I'll read this into the record. So, hello, thank you for the opportunity to share some comments and concerns about the proposed East Sanborn Estates Development Subdivision Map 20-04. Attached is a letter with current questions and comments. In additions, I've included previous planned commission remarks that I shared during a meeting May 23, 2018. I've included them and asked, they're reviewed by staff prior to the upcoming meeting, and included, if appropriate, for a couple of reasons. Namely, the comments are still valid in timely, the comments and the issues raised were never addressed, answered due to the Sanborn Road Three Home Project, tentative parcel map TM 1704 not being completed to date. I've also attached the original presentation by the Development Services Department from May 23, 2018 meeting. Again, through this was addressing the sangren development of three homes fronting Sanborn Road. It is still applicable, especially due to the lack of information that residents currently have, possibly to this new project still being in the early stages of planning. Is my hope that the planning commission will keep current residents apprised of new information as this project progresses. Please note, I would like Page Seven, Item 12, to be prior to issuance of grading permit contained with the Development Services Presentation of May 23, 2018, to be reviewed during the current meeting. As I mentioned, in both my past and current comments, my neighbor to the north has dealt with drainage and quality of enjoyment of property issues since the developer behind her home bought in, brought in tons of field dirt and raised the home behind her. I've included a few pictures of the fence lines of the two homes to illustrate the elevation of the new home versus the established home of any neighbor, of my neighbor. I would want assurances that I will not face the same issue of drainage into my yard. Thank you again for the opportunity to share some of our thoughts regarding this project. And then, I'll read in the letter that she attached here. So, Wednesday, August 26, 2020, John and Stacy Hoffman, 1513 Alicia Drive, UBA City. Thank you for allowing me to share comments and concerns regarding the proposed East Sanborn Estates subdivision map. Will residents be able to review the tentative subdivision plot map when available and make further comments to the planning condition? Will the project meet current low-density development standards? Street width, I would request that the planning commission consider the requirement of a street width be addressed at the beginning of the project and the street width be in line with the Pebble Beach width. The street width of previous development on Jody Bay La Robin presents not only a safety visual hazard for the residents with street parking and the ability of only one car to drive on the street at a time and the possibility of pedestrian injuries due to the lack of driving space, but also a home value issue. The crowded cluttered appearance that the narrow street presents are not a positive for the neighborhood, just so a developer can squeeze one more home into the project. Green space, do the plans for this small development have any open green space or possibly grassy curbs between the sidewalk and the street plan? Is there a possibility the developer would consider a green space on the plot east of where Jody Drive will be connected? Again, this is a visual improvement to a neighborhood. Our home is adjacent to the eastern side of this proposed parcel plan. As a homeowner of Alicia, on Alicia Drive for 28 years, I would like assurances that if the plot backing our home and our neighbor in the adjacent plot to the south is developed, that it will be a single-story home and the developer will not be allowed to add field dirt to raise the elevation, as was done to my neighbor to the north on Alicia Drive, where the single-story home is approximately eight to 12 feet higher at the peak than their home. My concern is not only for view, privacy, and quality of life for the home where I've raised my family, but also drainage to our backyard. I appreciate you following my voice, allowing me to voice my concerns at this early stage of development. And with that, she attached a letter from 2018 regarding tentative map 1704, and that I've submitted to the planning commission with the past staff report to the planning commission for prior review. And I don't know if we have any people online or any comments. So, with that, I read that into the record, and I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing or whenever you.
Sure, well, we can wait till the public hearing ends. At this point, is there anyone online?
There are no comments received.
Okay. So, we'll give, I'll give it one moment. If anyone wishing to make any comments, please write them in. Still not seeing anything. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And, sorry, I didn't mean to make a jump there, Mr. Helm. And with respect to that, do we have any questions from the commission regarding the public hearing or of staff or the applicant at this point? Commissioner Shannon?
Yes.
Dasher?
Yes.
You do have questions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the things that came up more in-depth in the presentation than I, than I caught in the package is the issue of the drainage and lifting the building pads. And I understand that that's part of our flood requirements. Is there a provision, and I think I'm directing this at Ben, that if a property is graded according to all of these things that they're supposed to be, to comply with FEMA and FHA and the city and the state and, you know, God and whoever else, in six years, with settling and shifting and so forth, there becomes a drainage problem, which I have seen on numerous occasions, especially in apartments. Is there any recourse? Is there a condition that we can place or something to provide those homeowners on the perimeter, any kind of protection from what the, the one public comment described?
So, absolutely. So, in the city's municipal code, design standards, there's specific language in there about not draining to affect adjacent property. And then, also, condition number 10, the condition of approval, it specifically states that the development of the properties include all measures to ensure no drainage or runoff from their rear yards, side yards, or lots that will affect adjacent properties. And so, so, as you mentioned, that's at.
Yeah, that's at the time of building.
And so, it does become, it does become a private issue at that time. So, 10 years passes and somebody decides to totally re-modify their backyard. Should that happen? One of the things that Sean's mentioned that we've learned over time is that we make that back wall a retaining wall, so it's concrete. And so, it's not as, it's not as easy for the water to pass through. But, that does become a private issue, and we typically try to aid when we hear a complaint from an adjacent neighbor. In this situation, the neighbors to the north and the south will basically be at the same height, and the property to the east will be with that retaining wall. And so, with that retaining wall, that will provide some assurances that you're not going to have the water draining to the east. And in the north and south, if somebody goes in there and totally re-grades something on their side and makes a mountain, you know, the yards aren't big now. Most of the drainage goes into underground drainage pipes that do come up, up in the front yard that will drain out. And so, we try to mitigate that as much as we can to make it hard to be modified later on, but it really comes down to a private issue, and then they'll call code enforcement, and we try to educate them and, and have the public work it out so it doesn't become into some sort of private legal battle. But, there is a specific condition that if they drain onto that neighbor and they call us in 10 years, we'll tell them, yes, you're not allowed to do that per the municipal code, per the conditions of this approval. But as far as how do you get them to correct it or not do it, that gets tougher.
And so, at that point in time, when you're, when you say, how do we get them to do it, you're referring to the other homeowner from where the water is draining as opposed to the contractor or the developer?
The contractor is passed and gone, so.
Yes, he's gone.
This typically happens 10 years after the fact, 20 years after the fact. Somebody does some sort of special feature in a backyard that creates issue, and we try to tell them to work it out between the neighbors. But it, there is, there is a basis that he's not, a person's not allowed to drain on, infect, to negatively affect that adjacent property, but it really becomes a private property legal issue.
I know that, you know, there are occasions where the soil will vary from one lot to another, and the water can sub under, and then it's going to go to the point of least resistance, which is the lowest property. And, you know, of all the things that a homeowner has to deal with, I think that improper drainage that's coming onto my property is one of the worst things that, and hardest things to correct. And that particular thing concerns me. So, that, that's more of a comment than a, than a question, but.
Yeah, in this one, it's definitely that double-edged sword, because in order to keep the drainage from going to the east, the pad has to be elevated. And so, that's where the pad is elevated higher, so you get it to drain to the west. But then, but then you start getting that separation difference. And where we try to fix it with, when we get to that large separation in adjacent properties is where, over the last 10, 14 years, we've, we've called out this concrete or masonry stem wall.
We need you to use the microphone, though, because the people online can't hear.
One of the things we wanted to point out, we, like I said, we did a lot, all the improvement plans, and we have topo, the rear 10% of this property from like Jody Drive eastward, currently kind of flows towards those people's lots, the three eastern lots that are existing. So, when we get done, all of our water will be directed westward towards Jody Drive, away from their property. So, in the short term, they'll have less water from our, from this bare piece of property. Long-term, if someone does that, fills in their, I can't speak to that, but short-term, they'll have less water coming from this property. They'll go from whatever they get today to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Opening it up at this point. Okay, I had a couple of questions, and I don't know, Sean, you might wind up addressing, but just out of curiosity, with the retaining wall, how, how deep are those? And Ben, maybe you can answer, I don't.
I'm trying to think, it's supposed to be a minimum of six inches above. As stated earlier, the height is going to be around nine to ten, nine to 10 inches high. Now, you're asking about the foundation.
Correct, how, how deep is it?
The foundation on a wall that high, about a foot high, retaining about a foot of dirt, will probably be a foot to 18 inches below the surface.
Okay, so, and the reason I asked that was because you mentioned seepage, which I hadn't even thought. Okay, so, and the reason I asked that was because you mentioned CPG, which I hadn't even thought about. But that should help mitigate that to some degree. Okay. Another question that the letter brought up, and I'll just ask it at this point, street width. Were there any issues or, I mean, what, there, I presume they're within the city's tolerances. But do you care to add anything with respect to the street widths?
The roads, the street widths we're using are the city standard. The subdivision to the north was, is still the city standard today. So we're tying into the north stub on Jody and the south, meeting the city standard and also Bay Drive. Pebble Beach, the one they referred to, would probably be considered a collector. And it was built under Sutter County standards, so it is a wider road, but it'll be, these roads will be narrower.
Okay. And the last question that was on the letter was, I presume.
Just to add to that, Chairman Eiler, is that, in order to tie into A and B, we don't want to do something weird where you nick it out and then come back. And then also, definitely, they meet conditions and with the city standard, it allows for parking on each side of the street with two 10-foot lanes. And so, if there is a large truck on each side, sometimes as you get tight, but technically, if you measured it, it's two 10-foot lanes that allow for emergency vehicles to pass through there. And so, there's some pros and cons depending on who you ask. And the pros for the city public works and the general plan is that that provides traffic calming in addition to not building roads when you're not needed. And so that's where you see on Pebble Beach, it is a nice wide road for driving, but then you get constant complaints about the speeds and dangers of pedestrians crossing the road.
Okay. And then the other item in the letter that was mentioned was the consideration of green space for a subdivision this size. I'm not sure what the requirements are, but I believe.
So through the city's general plan, we've established an impact fee. And so with these, they will pay all applicable impact fees for park space. And so, due to the size of this, there's no requirement, there's no general plan requirement that they need to identify a park space in there. But they are paying, with this development, each single lot will be paying that applicable impact fee for city parks.
Right, okay.
And, yes, there is the parkway strip, the green space between the curb and the sidewalk, as Sean mentioned. So these, the. Yeah, yeah, that's very true. I should be careful how I say green space. With the, with the new standards regarding water efficiency, low water use, that we're starting to go towards a model that you'll see more DG, decomposed granite and some shrub type thing. And we're trying to make that subdivision-wide, so there's a consistent theme, so we don't have hodgepodge of application. But, but that is, one of the issues with the parkway strips is that with the grass, it's harder to meet the immuello requirements, these state minimum water standards for grass.
With respect to that, any other questions or comments, discussion? I'm not seeing anybody on the screens anymore, so.
This is Lori.
Commissioner Adams.
I'm just going to make my same comment that I really, really think that we need to update our general plan. And I know that I just keep saying that, but I just want to reiterate it. We need to update it so that we can make good decisions based on the current, the current way things need to be done. And we need to reconsider some of the policies that are in place because we are starting to bump up against those over and over and over again. So just wanted to put that on the record again.
Okay. And I'll make one comment in terms of the fact that I'm glad that we're seeing finally some subdivision lot that we're moving forward with some of this. And I know that it's been probably a long time. It's been a while since we've seen this kind of thing. And I know that, you know, statewide, we need more development, more residential. We're just, no one's building anything. So I'm glad to see that we're contributing to this in a smart way. And anyway, so I'll just make that comment at this point. So that'll, that'll end my comments. Yes. Who is this?
Commissioner Ali.
Yes.
And I also wanted to comment that, you know, like the earlier things that were brought to us and many things that come to the planning commission, they're more pie in the sky. And it sounds like this one may actually happen. And I'm glad to see Inner West's name on that and really feel hopeful that'll continue on. I appreciate that you addressed the areas of concern for the public. And I hope that they'll note the idea that they can eliminate those extra fences and go with the higher improve the conditions in their area. But I do appreciate that it sounds like this is going to happen.
Okay. Any other discussion or motions?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Dasher?
Make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation, item A and item B with the following modifications. Delete the last two paragraphs on page one of the conditions of approval as they don't apply to the tentative subdivision maps and the tentative subdivision map general note number four. This application is not for the approval of a developmental permit, but only for the subdivision map.
Okay, so we have a first. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Shannon with a second. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dasher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Aye.
Chairperson Eiler?
Yes. Okay, unanimous vote and congratulations. You guys have a project. All right, thank you for all your hard work. All right, and the last item on our agenda tonight is, well, I think there's a little bit more than that. But anyway, the next item on our agenda. Public hearing to consider a general plan amendment 20-01 and rezone 20-01 to convert 23 acres from a regional commercial land use designation to a high-density residential land use designation. The proposed rezone would change the zoning from a general commercial C3 zoning district to a multifamily residence R3 zoning district. And with that, I believe we have a staff report. And we're getting a couple of last-minute signatures. Planning Director Moody.
Okay. So the item before you is in regards to a general plan amendment, rezone for a property at the corner of Stafford Way and Louise Avenue. And so, this project is vacant parcel. It's pretty non-typical, it's just pretty typical. There's no major topographical features. It's adjacent to a hotel that's on the west and the 99 cent store on the west. The, and with residential, it's zoned R2 to the east, but with single-family residential there. So the proposed general plan amendment will change the land use designation from regional commercial to medium-high-density residential. And so the proposed rezone will change the zoning from general commercial C3 to high-density residential R3. And so staff prepared environmental assessment EA 20-04, including initial study, a mitigated deck and a mitigation monitoring program to evaluate the proposed changes of the land use. So here's an exhibit from the general plan. You could see, right now, it's currently this purple color, which is the regional commercial. And what we're proposing to do is change it to this kind of a tan color, which is the R3 high, the medium-high residential. And then with the zoning, it's currently C3. And then you could see on the, on the other slide, we're proposing to go to R3. And so, again, the existing uses on the north, you have regional commercial C3. It's the parking lot and the 99 cent store. On the, on the east, you have medium-low-density residential, two-family residence, single, and then it's built as a single-family residence. On the west, you have the Travel Lodge Motel, that's a C3 regional commercial. And on the south, there's actually a thin vacant lot right here. And then you have many storage facility right here, a self-storage facility that's CM. So you have a small, small lot of C3 and then it goes into a CM use for the zoning. So the proposed residential designation would be consistent with the general plan policies. So when the city looked at this and stuff, and especially with the recent state push over the last year and also with council push about affordable housing, is that the general plan policy, it looks to promote patterns that maximize residence, accessibility to parks, open space, shopping areas. Look to promote, promote a balanced land use program that increases the ability to live and work in the city. Provide a variety, it provides a variety of housing in all neighborhoods and reserve sites where appropriate for housing types that ensure the UVA City remains an inclusive, affordable community. It promotes infill development that maintains the scale and character of the established neighborhoods. And it provides for concentration of activity and mixed use and pedestrian-oriented development in selected areas. And so when we looked at that, that's exactly, we consider it infill. It's been a longstanding vacant lot. It's a nice buffer between the C3 and the single-family. And so, with this, and I want to be clear with this, is that when the project was submitted, there was a draft application for a 24-unit apartment complex. At this time, we're just considering the land use changes. So we're considering the general plan amendment and the rezone. The project would then be submitted, is proposed to be submitted after the land use changes. And then depending on the size of the project, then it would come back for a development plan review. Based on the size, if needed. If it's under 24, 26 units, then it would be ministerial, which would be staff-level review for consistency with city policies. And so at 0.83 acres, this with a maximum density is 36 units per acre. And so that calculates out to about 29 units is the maximum density that they could put on this 0.83 acre site. Looking at that draft plan, 24 units is already getting tight with the city standards. And working with the developer, it sounds like, based on his model, that that's the range in size that they're looking at. And they're definitely here in the audience tonight and can answer any specific questions about that. But I want to be clear that tonight, we're not reviewing the apartment complex. This might totally change. What we're looking at is the land use change for the general plan and the rezone. And then the project would then be able, any project would, residential project would be able to come that comes in and meets the city standards for those densities. And so with that, staff recommends you conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings. The proposed project has been examined in respect to its consistency with the goals and policies of the general plan and zoning code, its compatibility with surrounding uses and the scope of improvements, all of which have been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment. The planning commission finds that on the basis of the whole record, there will not be significant effect on the environment given adoption of the mitigated measures as detailed in the initial study. The planning commission finds that the proposed general plan amendment 20-01 and rezone 20-01 are consistent with the general plan. The proposed land use designation is compatible to surrounding properties and uses and is in the best interest of the city facilitating development of affordable multifamily residential units. The proposed general plan amendment and rezone would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the city. All project utilities will provide it and public services will be provided by the city. And so with that, with this, a rezone and a general plan amendment, with this, it will need to be, go to the city council level in order to be approved. And so right for tonight, you're reviewing it with a recommendation for city council. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the applicants in the audience and the engineer to answer any specific questions.
Okay, at this point, would the applicant like to add anything to the staff report? Okay, if you could. Well, tell you what, I don't know if we'll have any questions or not, but we'll find out here in a moment, so. Okay, Commissioner Dasher says no. Commissioner Shannon?
I just, since you're here, I'm going to ask the question. It doesn't really apply to what we're here to do. But is, are you planning on affordable housing at all? This would be such an awesome site. Look. It would be an awesome site for a tax credit project. I mean, the points are there. I'm sitting here calculating in my head. But if, if it's a no, then that's fine. It's just my own curiosity and you're here, so I'm asking.
John O'Chapinty, I live at 2319 Lincoln Road in UVA City.
Oh my God, John, I didn't recognize you.
Incognito with a ball cap on. At this point, no. We do, we have this particular plan completely engineered and drawn out that you see on that. But that's something that we have been approached and it's something we probably will talk about prior to going forward. We would like to build this particular floor plan and footprint, this particular building. We've got three other sites with a lot larger number of units laid out on them, one of them in UVA City. And so it's kind of a test project, you might say, to build a small. This particular 24-unit complex, in the larger, the larger apartment complexes, this is a real standard unit. So by building that out, you learn a lot of things, right? And that's, I wished I could tell you more than that right now. The biggest problem we have with this parcel, you know, like a lot of developers, you end up with these small pieces. When we did 99 cent store, we had to buy another chunk, cut them a parking lot, and it left this little lot that we tried putting Gwaki over there with one of their deals. We just, it never was enough room to do anything. So that's when we thought, gosh, it'd be a good little place for some apartments. And it would be a good place with, you know, for the affordable that you're talking about, right?
One of the things with the affordable housing is there's a certain point system that you go through because it's a competitive process. And some of the parcels that I know that you have, you don't get enough high enough points to do tax credit. But this particular site, its proximity to services is just, you know, there. So that's, that's why I ask. But cross that bridge when we come to it, changes the zoning and we'll move on. We definitely need more rental housing of any kind, so I think that that's good.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Blake, I believe is the next one I see up there.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ali?
I have no questions. I have comments when it's appropriate for that.
Okay, Commissioner Adams?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I get everybody? I think I got everybody. And, great, I'm glad, actually, this does look like, it could be a nice project or, anyway. But obviously, first steps first, so glad to see that. Thanks, John. Anyway, additional discussion, and it sounded like we had someone up there that I couldn't remember. Was it you, Commissioner Adams, for additional discussion or Commissioner Ali?
Commissioner Ali.
I can't see your face. All I see is a DA and an LA and I'm trying to, you know, anyway.
So this is Commissioner Ali. I just want to comment that I think that this is a very appropriate change and a very appropriate transition from the commercial to the high-density and then the lower-density residential. I think it's entirely on track with what is going on throughout the state. And it's a healthy transition. And I'm looking forward to more apartments actually happening here in UVA City.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion, questions, or a motion?
To the chair?
Yes.
Have we held the public hearing on this portion yet?
We will now. We'll go ahead and open it for, thank you for the reminder. I apologize for that. We'll open it for public com- We'll open it for public comment, and do we have any comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait just a moment, make sure that we don't have any pop-up. A short moment. If anybody's out there, is anybody on? Can we tell if anyone is on? Is it?
Just two individuals.
There's two individuals on, okay. All right, with that, no public, okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and come back to continued discussion or motions or questions?
There's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Shannon with the motion?
I move that the planning commission recommends to the city council approval of GPA 20-01, amending the general plan land use designation of the subject property from regional commercial to medium-high-density residential. Approve rezone 20-01, rezoning the subject property from general commercial C3, combining district to multifamily residential R3, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared from GPA 2001 and RZ 2001 as detailed in the environmental assessment EA 20-04, dated August 4, 2020 pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, Section 15, or 15070B1.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Do we need to also make the findings that the, that the commission makes the findings is outlined in the recommendation on the staff report?
Yes, that would be helpful. So a general statement that says findings made as outlined in the staff report added to the recommendation.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Commissioner Shannon?
I certainly am.
Yeah. So we'll go.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Adams is second, and we'll do a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Commissioner Dasher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake? Chairperson Eiler?
Yes. Okay, so congratulations. You guys can move forward. Thanks for your input, appreciate the project. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Development Services Director Reports, and Planning Director Moody.
All right, so rather light report tonight, so I was just going to give you a quick update on some of the building activity. So in review, we're still looking at the O'Reilly Auto Parts, it's getting close, at 1660 Lincoln Road, 365 Epley. We have a quality truck and trailer repair with a new metal shop and a two-story office. 1470 Butehouse Road, the LDS Temple, we're finalizing the plans for the, what do we call the hall in the back west corner? The meeting house. And so the meeting house, the plans have been approved as of today, and they're working for, they're moving forward with pouring the foundation, I believe, as early as this Friday for the temple. The Holiday Inn Express comments have been sent in coordination with the developer, and we're pending plan resubmitment from them. Regarding projects that are underway, that are, that have been before the commission, is the Dollar General's nearing completion. We have the Stabler Lane Rehab project that's also getting closer, and with a push to open towards the end of this month, different aspects of that facility. We have the Samuel Drive Ampli Health Building under construction, and then also Recycling Industries 140 Epley Drive is under construction. And so, ready to issue, the plans have been reviewed, submitted, and we're just waiting for them to pick up the plans and go as the KFC project, and as one of the major projects, and then as we talked at LDS Meeting Hall. Currently, a big win that I would say for the planning commission is part of that project on Clark and 20. They recently demoed the bent prop in that Chevron station. And so I'm looking forward, I've heard different rumors as far as how that project, when it will be built and the timing on it, but I will take the win as far as the demolition at this point of those two buildings. They were looking pretty dilapidated, so. Also, the Waffle House, and so on Louise Avenue, there was recent fire damage on Highway 99, Louise Avenue, the old pink building there, near Northside Fitness, is, recently had a fire incident, I believe Monday night. And so there's substantial fire fenced off, and so we're working with the owner on moving forward and how to demo that building, so it's not such an eyesore. And then also, staff met with the owners regarding the Waffle, Waffle Barn? I'm getting confused now, on Highway 20 today, regarding demolishing the Waffle Barn on Highway 20 at Olive Street there and Live Oak Boulevard. And so with the COVID-19, my understanding is that that business owner has decided to close, and so they're looking at demolishing it and obtaining credits. And so we're looking forward, there is an existing subdivision map for that, for that site, and so we'll see what development comes on that. Additionally, we've received a couple of plans for residential development in 1003, 1005, Gilliland Drive, two vacant lots on the corner of Gilliland and Lincoln that have been vacant for quite a while. We just received plans for Duplex, and so we'll see if that moves forward. Additionally, on the planning side, for entitlement, we've received a 7-Eleven application, 7-Eleven gas station application for the northwest corner of Walton and Franklin. And so as staff reviews that and works through the entitlement process, you'll most likely see that come before you here. So at the corner of Franklin and Walton, the northwest corner, there's vacant, you just play the strawberry field there, you would see. I'm proposing that the next meeting, September 9, is canceled. And then we have right now pending on September 23, so the second meeting in September, that we will have a meeting, but it's proposed to be virtual. And so with that, we have one item, it's an AT&amp;T Monopole in the Von Gelderen Way area that is coming forward, and we want to keep that item on track. And there's also concerns, it's not concerns, but there's a conflict issue with the space here for a campaign debate on that same night. And so with it being one rather small item, we're proposing to make the 9:23 meeting virtual. And so more information to follow, but the 9:09 meeting will be canceled, 9:23 is pending, and currently, right now, the only item besides the minutes is this AT&amp;T use permit for a Monopole. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments from the commission on anything in my purview.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you for your report, appreciate it. Oh, yes, Commissioner Blake.
So in light of Commissioner Adams' remarks concerning, you know, attack, detached trees and catching up our general plan, which I completely agree with, the tree study, in which is being conducted at the city currently, or project, there's an analysis happening, I was, happened to be at a farmer's market, and so I was wondering about that project. Who initiated it? Is it a city-owned project? And will the results of that project, or when will that project be done, if it is indeed cities? Will the data or the analyses of the gathered information drive further results in the city plan concerning trees?
That's definitely the plan. Thank you, Commissioner Blake, for the reminder too. And so I want to bring that up with the, there's definitely been a push by the council and also the commissioners that it's time for a general plan update, and to address some of the changes and just the status from 2004 to now. And so recently, the city's received a couple of planning grants through the state, an SB2 grant, $300,000, and then also a LEAP grant, they call it, for another $300,000. And so the city has recently awarded the first $310,000 SB2 grant to a company called Placeworks, which is that city's very familiar with, working with in the past, and with HCD, for the Department of Housing. And so right now, they're contracted to start the process for the, over the next year, to update our general plan and land use plan, and with the priority to meet housing element requirements regarding the regionals' housing needs. So they've established a housing need for this area, and with that, we need to update our land use map in order to identify areas that meet the current law, and to try to put those, to allocate land uses for those, for those housings and those densities to meet that need. And then, but with that, we're leveraging that funds to also do a general update where currently, we're working through a transportation element, where we have a new transportation model that's wrapping up, that we're going to bring that in and finalize that with this update, and then do a general overview for to meet current laws and look at that. And so currently, we have a contractor on board, working over the next year to update the general plan, and then work through our zoning code to match those land use plans. With this, which referenced this master tree program, so the Parks Department received a grant from the federal government about a year or two ago, and with that, they qualified for money for a grant to do a master tree program, and then also plant, I believe, 300 trees, 500 trees or so, with some matching funds from the city. And so with that, the plans are that they're going to put a document as a policy guideline that analyzes those parkway strips, the tree types, you know, the look, that looks at everything from how to avoid root issues to trees that meet the current drought standards that are good for this area, update our tree list, put definitions on the areas of those trees, so when we call out 50% shade requirements that we're, at 15 years, we're picking trees that we know that are going to hit those targets. And it's, the idea is that it's, it'd be a design policy document that we could use at staff level, and then also at the commission level, and the council, so as a reference to, hey, this is what we're adopting. And so as far as how, we haven't figured out the exact logistics, but I have talked to Brad McIntyre briefly about potentially, and with a consultant, about having a workshop in the future, depending on how this plays out, you know, that we could bring planning commission up to date with where we're at, or how we bring the input in from the planning commission on that. So, Michelle, particularly to the trees, it's in process. I would guess it's still six months out, but we're definitely having talks on how to bring that into play for the planning commission, and so there's input on that and how that's set parameters for what our city looks like.
Thank you, yeah, this is a, I mean, you don't want to just jump on a general plan, you know, it takes a lot of thought and process and community input, so, agreed. And thank you for that. So that's what it's called, the Master Tree Program, and that's what they did say, they took their survey and stuff, they did say that they had plans to come to planning commission, so I look forward to their presentation. Thank you, Ben.
Okay. Any other questions for Ben? Okay, let's see, we had a meeting last night, right, with the planning commission of Sutter County?
Last week.
That was last week? Okay, last night was, I'm sorry, yeah, it was.
It's always Wednesday, one of the.
Was an appeal to the.
Yes.
The planning commission. But anyway, do you have an update for it?
Well, on the appeal, that was, went before the Board of Supervisors and the subdivision, the decision to approve the subdivision was held up by the Board of Supervisors, so it's going forward. And the other big thing that we did, and for the life of me, I can't remember the name of, no, I know that, what's the name of the road it's on? No. Okay. The county planning commission approved a facility next to a PG&E substation. It's a bunch of big batteries that will collect, and I'm, I'm not really big on all the technical terms, it was pretty over my head, collect the excess wattage throughout the day created by the substation, and hold them in these batteries, so when we hit peak hours and people's solar is not producing, and all of a sudden, you know, the usage skyrockets, the stored electricity will be released back into the grid during those peak hours. Do you want to elaborate any better than that? It was a, it's a little more complicated than most things. I mean, it was very simple, but the terminology was a little much, because they were talking to, the applicant was talking as if everybody in the room knew the terms that they were talking about. So it was, it was definitely interesting. But, anyway, it sounds like that is the wave of the future, and anytime there's a substation and land that's available close to it, they may be putting in these little battery substations to help even out the power supply.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioner Shannon? For the, okay. Hearing none at this point. We'll go ahead and, if there's no other business, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Good to go.